All right, I'm going to call me the board supervisor this quarter. We will begin with the opening ceremony. Please. Say again, would you lead us from the flag today? Please join me.
The President is the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for your location. Almighty God, we pray this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask you to cloak us in wisdom and fortitude that we may dispense our knowledge and facts intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Amen. Having we had no closed session, we will move to agenda approval, addition, and deletion. I have a request to speak during the agenda approval, but I'm going to allow that during public comment, which will immediately follow. So I'm looking for agenda approval, addition, and or deletion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to table H3 and help some future meeting after all this COVID-19 has done.
I have a motion. I am in seconds.
Then approval of the rest of the agenda.
One second there also.
It's one motion.
One motion.
It would essentially be approval of the agenda without H3.
Okay. Called motion. All in favor? Poked? Motion carries.
So H3 is on the table or off the agenda for today?
But that brings us to public comment. I was going to start with Shane here. I have several parts under that. And any of those that wish to speak on H3, this is the moment that you're going to want to do that. Shane, if you'd be.
Good morning, Supervisors. Shane Starr with the office of Congressman Doug DeMolto. Hammond invited me here this morning to just give a quick congressional briefing. I wanted to take a moment to just do a quick briefing on both the residents and the governor's plans to reopen our communities, most been laid out as of today. First, I'd like to praise Lassen County for the excellent work you guys have been doing in terms of planning for COVID-19 and the things that have been going on in this county. Execution overall has been very well done. I just want to praise the good work county staff, which we do years of that in our regard. Real quick, I want to go over a few just quick remarks that made, and then a little bit of other questions on re-owning plans as well as any other congressional activities. If you have questions on. Several weeks now, our office has been receiving a question that has most often been, where are we going to go, or sorry, when are we going to get back to law? Our office has been working with federal, state, local officials trying to wrap our heads around two scenarios that have not played out before in most of America's life times, that being a world pandemic and a complete pause in our local economies. To answer that question briefly, from what we know currently, we should know that'll be true. The reason I say that is laid out in the President's criteria for opening up America again, which is in the fact that he presented you this morning. There are pros specifics a state or regional area should meet before proceeding with a phase of comeback. Going down that list on page two, the first is symptoms. That first criteria laid out is downward trajectory of influenza-like illnesses reported within a 14-day period. To date, the Center for Disease Control is reporting up to the end of the week of April 11 shows a steady decline in ILI reporting on the national level. Jurisdictions experiencing high or very high ILI activity, sorry, IILI activity is down from 21 jurisdictions or states as well. Most of these are located on East Coast, Oklahoma, Wisconsin, and Louisiana. California is currently at a minimal level of ILI reporting. However, according to lab, as I mentioned, with that April 11 date, is the of the most recent weekly reports from the CDC. Updated information will come out in the next week or two, and we'll have a better understanding of where that ILI standard is at. Second criteria is downward trajectory of COVID-like syndromatic cases reported within a 14-day period. As of April 15, the state high for new cases per day was at 1,758. As of April 20, new cases for the day were 645. So we are seeing a downward trajectory within the state of California. The cases have been relatively flat for Northern California. Should this trend continue for the next week, we will continue to meet that criteria as well. Same goes for the section on cases. Continued downward trajectory for 14 days, one more week at this point, and we will have met those criterias as well. Third section is hospitals. The first criteria is treat all patients with crisis care. Crisis care is short for crisis standard of care, which was initially framed by the Institute of Medicine in 2009 to ensure a fair process is in place to make clinically informed decisions about scarce resource allocation during an epidemic, exactly what we're going through now. In other words, this is what we saw in the first two or three weeks of this whole thing out in the United States with major metropolitan areas like New York, Los Angeles, and others, scrambling to find supplies to ensure their healthcare facilities were properly staffed as well. In our region, local healthcare facilities are reporting being properly stocked, but those supplies will grow quickly. We should now break the current into region. FEMA and CalUS along with private manufacturers are building up supplies quickly, and projections show another two weeks should be needed to meet demand, should there be a spike in names predicted by the California Department of Public Health. The final criteria, robust testing program in place for at-risk healthcare workers, including emerging antibody testing. The first part of this, robust testing, is now in play throughout the state and regions for healthcare workers, and we've been successful in that. Antibody testing that's just recently come online is in the early stages of data collection. Santa Clara County did an initial study through Stanford University, and those results can be found online. More antibody testing will come online in the next couple of weeks, giving healthcare professionals a better understanding of who has been infected and what hospitalization and death rates are more accurately. This will move us from predictive modeling to decision-making using real-time trends within our healthcare facilities, which is where we need at this point. Now, in reviewing the two proposals, or the two proposed plans, you will notice both are quite vague in general direction. One is intended to be that way, the President's plan. The other is not really fleshed out at this time, the governor's plan, and is just beginning of evolving by asking the six key questions, all being worked on. Both roadmaps have the same high-level intended achievements, though, to mitigate risk of resurgence of coronavirus in a population, to ensure the ability to properly care for the sick in our healthcare facilities, and to reduce social, emotional, and economic disruptions. The President's roadmap is broken down into three phases. Phase one, or the big steps approach, as I like to call it, isn't much different than what we are doing now. Avoiding groups of 10 or more people, social distancing of colleagues, travel to home should be essential, schools remain closed, and employees are still encouraged to travel wherever possible. Phase two, should there be no evidence of a rebound in cases, allow us for nonessential travel, schools can reopen, and suggest social studies and number of 50 people. This means cameras can be used to pick me back up. That was a lot funnier when I wrote that. Phase three allows for much more freedom with unrestricted staffing in the workplace, with this grand casino therapy facility, and hardly reopen with increased standing room. That's actually the President's style. In other words, normal speed with a hint of precaution. The governor's plan lays out six criteria. Each county will have to decide if it meets those. Of the governor's six indicator questions, for modifying the stay-at-home order, I leave that to the Board of Work in production with leadership of the county's incident action plan to determine and to find answers to. I do encourage each of you to remain active in discussions with county staff, local leaders, and the business community, working together to answer these six questions, provide flexibility and creativity in future actions, and to continue using best available data. Lassen County and the region will eventually be able to find some form of role. That being said, I do want to advise the board of supervisors on future actions of the governor's office in the state of California. In terms of those six indicator questions, Governor Newsom has created a task force for the state headed by former presidential candidate Tom Stare and business owner, who I'm sure you may be familiar with. The governor's office is looking at trying to turn this task force into something that will lay out new guidelines and priorities for the state in a much more progressive manner than what we like to see. He talks about green policies, fair policies, all sorts of different things. The state of California is going to try and dictate on the local level over the next year. This task force will be meeting twice monthly until the remainder of the year through 2020. So be advised, things will become relevant in the state where you only have to know what those are. That being said, I do encourage you, the supervisors and local elected leaders of this county, to take matters into your hands and to ensure that it is the local government and the local leaders of this community who are guiding the reopening of not just the economy, but society. So that being said, I'll look at that after any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Shane, first of all, I'd like to make a statement. I want to thank you guys for the hard work you did on the fishing thing. Believe it or not, that meant a lot to a lot of people. Congressman DeMolto and Shane enabled our waters to be open so people could fish, and I believe you guys have been doing this. Secondly, I think that our small businesses are being crushed, as we speak. We're going to have some real revenue stream problem coming. As far as these PPE loans and all that stuff, are they refunding that today?
The Senate will be voting on that today, most likely. I haven't received the national desk yet, but I have to work from home, so I can't cut what's going on. The House should be voting on that if the President goes, the plans should be voting on that today. So hopefully by the end of this week, the President will have a bill to sign, and we can get another 250 voting back into the USDA loan program.
So the counties and Congress in DeMolto's district, what's their plan? Are they going to do like you said, or are they going to follow the guidelines proposed by the state, or?
That's still relatively early. We are just now starting to see a discussion at the local level throughout the district counties, starting to discuss what the reopening plans are going to be and how it all ought to be. Everyone is potentially waiting to receive guidance from both the President and the governor, as which has already been done. If you take the opportunity to read through those six indicator questions released by the governor's office, I encourage the county, especially the leadership of the IAAP, or the Action Plan, to begin answering those questions on the local level, determining what can and can't be required, and how it all about, and best practices reopening the country. We are starting to see some of the locals take on this discussion. Many are still pausing, waiting for someone to have a phone line to. I encourage you.
There's no pause.
Was that Alcon? Chris.
Shane, you and I have been talking quite a bit the last couple of weeks. How about the funding for the counties coming from the feds? Does that look like that's going to happen? And second question is, when is the Forest Service going to reopen up their areas so that these lakes that we can fish on have more tracts to go to?
Yeah, absolutely. Your first question, you were hoping Treasury would release last week the guidelines to states on how local economies will be able to apply to see their funding to the reopening. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, so we expect those to come out this week. That will be Friday, it's a 30-day deadline, as required by Congress. So we will be looking forward to that. Once that information is received, we will ensure that the counties have that from Treasury. Once that takes place, the states will then be required to apply to that funding, and then become the task group to overcome the flood of Lassen County. We expect that to be sometime in the next two to four weeks for that to take place. So unfortunately, we know that we can't. In terms of your questions on the Forest Service reopening, the congressional calls we've been having with the forest supervisor many more, or regional forest committee many more, legally. Right now, that is set for May 1st under the President's advisory. We are continuing to follow that up pretty regularly, almost daily with forest supervisors. I'm regularly in contact with all of them to ensure what is and isn't open, as well as staffing for fire departments, things like that, as well as recreational park time that's always starting to come on, ensuring that they are ready when the waters are on. Congressman DeMolto has been very adamant with the Forest Secretary, or Forest Chief Dickie Christensen in DC, as well as Secretary of Doom over USDA, that the Forest Service will reopen this summer. Our economies have been heavily upon that, and there's just no rational or realistic approach to keeping them closed all summer long. They have to reopen. So otherwise, you guys, we saw, an example of what we saw in the government shutdown beginning of January 2019. The public will still go, the public will still recreate, the public will still be destroying all the infrastructure. It's not paying care of the Forest Services, we're in this lesson the hard way. So we have been pushing very heavily that they will reopen now. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Karen, what's her?
On this money that's going to be possibly coming down from the federal to the state and into the county, is there a way to bypass the state's approach? Because otherwise, we're going to have the same problem that you were just talking about, with Stire and his outfit, arguing, social engineer this whole thing, and it's not what Lassen County needs and or wants.
No, absolutely, we do agree with that. A couple of things at that point. Congressman DeMolto has been very vocal with Secretary of Administration of the Treasury to ensure that the guidelines written are protecting our rural and smaller populations in jurisdictions like Lassen County. The second part of that, unfortunately, based in reality, there's no way to allow every local government to go to the Treasury window to request funding assistance. There are over 30,000 governmental jurisdictions, the Treasury's not set up to receive that, and that was actually an initial discussion to Senate and House leadership and Treasury Division of the Lighthouse. They pleaded that we would not open this up to all forms of government to go to the Treasury window directly to apply for funding, because they just, they don't have the manpower, they aren't structurally set up to do that kind of volume. So that is one thing that we are trying to work on, see if we can find a solution to get around that somehow, but we've not been able to.
I wish I had that. So in other words, no.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
And we hope to see you again real soon.
Absolutely.
For information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Kerry Cox.
Good morning, members. I want to say thank you very much for listening to your decisions about removing that, as I understand, concerning the virtual office. It's a really important discussion, and I don't, I think that there are a lot of people who'd love to weigh in on that, so I want to thank you very much for listening to what the public would like to hear. This is a difficult time, and so I appreciate that kindness because of the growth season is probably something that's important as well as funding, but I want to say thank you for allowing this to be pushed off a little bit so that people can come and see. Thank you.
Mr. Bridges.
Good morning, gentlemen. Gary Bridges is a little resident. I want to thank you too for taking that off the agenda. I was very concerned with it on there because, you know, I know about eight people in here that came out, and they're 60-year-old older, and because they wanted to voice their opinion and be heard on the issue, and, you know, it is a public concern, and last time it was voted down, because that's what the public wanted, I was kind of surprised you couldn't see it on the agenda again. So anyway, it'll probably be back after this is all over, but I appreciate it that stays off the agenda until this completely follows this, so people can turn out and really voice their opinions. So thank you very much.
Randy Darrell.
Randy Darrell, resident of Lassen County. I also, just for the records, just to take it all, thank you for taking the time to consider the complications that could have created. I had a couple of letters from folks who could not be here because of their age and their concern for the distancing. So thank you all for taking the time to realize the importance of holding this matter off. Thank you.
Do you have copy of those letters, Mr. Darrell?
Yes.
You gave them to the clerk?
Yes.
Carol Clark.
Mr. Teeter, I clearly remember when this board approved the dispensaries but not cultivation. You didn't like it, but you acknowledged that the people had spoken. The people spoke again when they looked at you out of office. I spoke at the next supervisor meeting and asked if we could expect this board to move ahead incrementally on the cannabis agenda. I guess I have that answer. My complaint has always been, and continues to be, that this board does not represent us. You are a microcosm of what goes on at the national level, protecting your positions, pushing your agendas, and maybe profiting from your decisions. The last time I was in a supervisor meeting, we got yet another lecture, this time for Mr. Hemphill, about what complete hypocrites we are if we oppose marijuana and drink alcohol. I don't drink, so I guess I'm allowed to oppose. Mr. Hemphill said that many more lives have been destroyed by alcohol and marijuana. True, but poor logic. This country has been drinking for a very long time. Marijuana, especially open groves, are a recent phenomenon, and the high potency stuff we're producing now is even more recent. The stats are not in yet. We have no idea how many lives will be destroyed, or what the long-term effects of commercial grows would be on Lassen County. Emergency rings have a new term, squrometers. People are coming in after using cannabis products, experiencing psychotic episodes, screaming and vomiting, thus the term squrometers. Again, nickels ahead, dollars behind. Did you know that Oregon figures it won't need any cannabis to stop the stores for the next six years? With that kind of surplus, do you really think the demand is there? Do you really think it will solve this county's financial issues? Do you really think when it becomes highly profitable, that you'll be the ones controlling it? Your sheriff doesn't want cannabis here? Ranchers have warned you? Doctors have warned you? People who've spent their lives dealing with drugs and addiction have warned you? None of your experts on this, and you have not been listening.
Thank you. Mike Scanlon.
Hello, I'm Mike Scanlon, and I've been assistant hills here in Lassen County, and I think you've got opportunity to address you guys. I would give a lengthy dissertation on why I'm opposed to the cannabis issue in general and cultivation in particular. I just want to express that I'm extremely opposed to it. Most of the people that I know are opposed to it, and that was put off the schedule for today. I'd like it to not come back on the schedule. I think it's bad for our community, and it's bad for our culture. And I would appreciate your, not necessarily in the interest of any of your personal, but in the interest of the county and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Scanlon.
Hi, it's Grace Scanlon. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for putting off the vote. I really appreciate that, because I do know there's a lot of people that could make it. But I'm just a mom, my grandma. I spoke the last time. I've spoken in opposition to this, having been in law enforcement, my family's in law enforcement, with a career in law enforcement, and we've seen the net result of marijuana. And for the record, I would really like to know who is going to profit from this? Who's got property involved in this? Who keeps bringing this up? Because there was a definite no that I've heard from asking me. So I'm here to say no, again. The damage that's done irreparable damage. It's a gateway drug. It's not like alcohol in the sense that you go from alcohol to heroin, but there is a pretty good trail from marijuana onto heavier drugs. We have plenty of that. I mean, I don't know how it's been a step, kind of clean up the river, and get the people that are loaded continually out of there, but it's been a blight in our county to see people that are loaded on, I don't even know what. But listen to the people. There's a lot of families here. There's a lot of people who moved here and then staying here because they're families. And so why would we want to do that? We left the big state for a reason, and that's everywhere. If you want to know what open, rampant drug use looks like, look at Sacramento's scope. Do we want that here? Thank you for letting me speak, but I'm saying no, don't do it.
Thank you. Barbara Mangan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you. Well, as you know, my life has been all things COVID for the last six weeks, but I do want to say since Director of Health and Social Services and dealing with our community's most vulnerable population, that activity still goes on. So I'm going to take this moment to share with you a proud, proud moment of Mama Beer moment, and share with you an example of how our departments and agencies work together for the betterment of this community. Last Tuesday, the Public Guarding Office received a call that one of our concerned individuals went AWOL. This individual had severe mental health needs. The individual was last seen at 3:00 AM, and a facility realized he was missing at the breakfast call. The Public Guarding Office received notification of his missing status at a long meeting. To make a long story short, we became very concerned when the facility would not return our calls, and when we asked for the status of where this individual was. I knew that a missing person's report had been filed, and I did have that number. We tried calling the Sacramento Police Department, but we just got voicemail because of COVID. The offices were closed. We had to leave a message, and somebody would get back to us. As of today, that hasn't happened. I haven't received a callback. Thankfully, we did find this individual. I knew also that we needed to do something, so I reached out to Sheriff Dean Grubbs and asked for his help, knowing that a police officer could probably talk better to a police officer in another county. So he, without a beat, assigned a detective to my team, and so we pulled together the Public Guarding Office, which includes Gina Hart and Whitney Moore, and then for behavioral health, Orlando McElary, and then Officer or Detective, I'm not sure of his title, Shane Parker. Maybe it's one of the same, I don't know. But day two, we got together, this person was still missing, and we had to do something. So we, after calling, you know, all emergency departments, the cornrows, office, all the homeless shelters and everything, at around 4:00 in the afternoon, and still not really receiving a good update from the facility, their only response was, oh, he's still missing. And then we finally did hear back from the dispatch from the sheriff police that, oh, we're, if we find him, we'll return to the facility. That wasn't good enough for us. So I looked at the team, and I said, okay, guys, we have to go to Sacramento and look for this person, because nobody else is. Thinking that who wants to go into a COVID pit? I thought I might be the one, putting on my walking shoes and walking the streets of Sacramento, looking for somebody. All of them just jumped up and said, hey, we're in. And so I was very impressed that four people would volunteer to do that, even though their workdays are very busy. So armed with N95 masks and many bottles of hand sanitizer, they set out first thing next morning to go to Sacramento and look for our client. Honestly, I knew that I had a great team assembled, but it never dawned on me, what if we didn't find this individual? What would plan next be? But anyways, so I started thinking about that around 2:00 in the afternoon, going, my last report was they still hadn't found him. So I started going, oh no, what do we do now? Anyways, I did receive a call at 2:47 that they found this individual. He was slumped over in a grassy area right next to a very busy road. Anybody know Sacramento's Mac Road area? Very busy. He was not, he was alive, not very responsive, but he was alive. Finally stood up, he gave some water, and he was very, he was shaking and everything. They took him to the emergency room. I just, again, he was there, then we had to do, trying to find a new place for him, but that's a meta story, and it worked out. He's safe, and he's housed. So I wanted to let you know that you don't always hear those stories about what our staff do to go above and beyond, but I just wanted to say that I couldn't be more happier with that collaboration, and that dedication, and that persistence. They found him, and that story ended on a good note. Thank you.
So all of the, that was a local?
This gentleman is, he's a local resident, but he's placed at a county because we don't have a place for him here, which is many of our LPS mentally ill individuals are not placed in Lassen County, don't have the facilities to take care of them. So we sent him out all over. We have people down in Palm Springs area, Bay area.
But other communities are not as invested in taking care of Susanville residents, as other counties?
Absolutely. And we do have a difficult time with our clients in other areas. I just think... I just think it's a matter of a small community, you really care for your people, and I think we go above and beyond. I'm not even sure of the Sacramento people. I don't want to speak, you know, about them and their intentions and all, but there was still lack of age about where this individual was. And every time we tried to get an update, we just got their voicemail as well. So team did a great job, and I couldn't be more proud of them.
Thank you. Jennifer Aguilera?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors. I'm Karen, and I'm here today, Jennifer Aguilera, Director of Community Social Services, to remind you that the month of April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. We really haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk about that, so I wanted to bring forward some of the efforts that we have done. So Lassen County's Child Abuse Prevention Council is asking for everyone to show their support by raising awareness to help prevent child abuse by coloring the pinwheel, which I have provided to you all today. And I've also put some extra ones back on the back counter. Making a pinwheel display or garden, which I will be presenting these to you today to post, to put at your house or any other office that you feel is appropriate, to recognize those who help children and families every day. In honor of children across the United States and close to home who have been lost to violence of virtual, Children's Memorial Club Raising will take place this Friday, April 24th, at 10:00 AM. Typically, we have done those in person, but we will be doing a virtual one so that everybody can participate. Lassen Care will be livestreaming this event at 10:00 AM, and Susanville staff has graciously offered to record and to post the video for us later on that day. We will also be providing a moment of silence for all children that have lost their, that have been lost to violence. In addition, and in conjunction, we're asking that everybody wear their blue on Friday. The National Child Abuse Prevention Color is this type of a blue, so that we can see poster pictures, wear blue for kids. We are also putting out several different marketing advertisements, just to remind people that because children are not in schools and in public places, and typically that's where we receive a lot of our child abuse reports, that it is up to the general public to be assertive and to be out there watching and taking care of our children while they're not in their typical learning institutions or in their public areas. So you can see those flyers, those will be released this week. It is unfortunate, COVID-19 did take over a lot of our planning efforts, but we're really going to try to ramp that up as kids are doing the virtual learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Aaron.
Chairman, I'd like to hold on the way home, dear friend, myself.
Absolutely.
Stick it up the window, too. I no longer have any public comment cards. Do I have any more public comments? In that case, we'll move on. Oh, I apologize. Come forward, please. Should you never take my glasses off when I ask that question?
Should be happy to develop it. That's consistent with the DMV. They lose everything. Thank you for this opportunity. I rise today in opposition to the vote in our law. I realize it's been taken off the agenda, I still want to be a part of opposition to it.
That's Marvin Clark for the record.
Otherwise known as nobody important.
Oh, you've got your moments, sir.
I want to talk about what motivates us. For 16 years, I was a resident parole agent here in Lassen County. My supervisors were often very careful about statistical success. But there were many of us who cared about living lives in public safety. I was first, throughout my entire career with county marijuana, don't test for it, don't search for it, don't arrest for it, and don't refer to district attorneys for prosecution other. If law enforcement can handle this, we'll just make it legal. And here we are, successful, we made it legal in California. And now we're even in opposition, we believe, and maybe it'll make a profit for us. But I would like to insert here that most of the police officers that I dealt with, all of them, I worked in Lassen County, I worked in Tama County, I worked in Kern County, I worked all over the state. But my home was here, and I was very fortunate to come here. And of course, with my experience with people that lived in Lassen County, Little Valley, Doyle, from Susanville, I had a whole county. And of course, in initial reviews, I've asked basic questions. And in just a very few minutes, I would be able to determine, at least, I'm a law lawyer, and law lawyers process information very slowly. When you ask, what's your day of work? And he has to stop and turn that page in his mind to ask that question, or what's a page in there that I asked him on? Let's say the rest are actually living that, that southern circle, and they're like, I don't know. You know, we actually have people in Lassen County that are 20s or 30s old who do not know their home addresses. Don't know their home phone number. These people smoke marijuana. They stay slow, and they have very little motivation. And here we are, considering increasing growth, commercial growth here, because we hope to profit for from it. I think we're going to have some problems. Only the Mexican cartels have successfully cultivated, distributed, and sold for a profit marijuana, and they don't pay any taxes. A few sides to every story. And in this one, I'm talking about motivation. What motivates you? Why don't we continue to address this in this county? It's certainly been a long one. I remember writing a discharge to a human guy, and he died in an overdose here in Lassen County 10 years ago. And I got the death certificate, and I wrote the report, and actually said, "Successful completion of parole, recommend a discharge, see a tax death certificate." Because statistically, if you're not rearrested, if you're not returned custody for violation of parole, if you're not convicted, get sent to prison, and you get off parole in any manner, including death, you are a success. But there are two sides to this story. Your mom and dad, spouses and kids, that's not success at all. There are children here, supported by the county, section eight housing and food stamps. And we see this parade of broken hearts, broken lives. And what conclusion do we come from? What motivates us? We need to legalize this and tax it. Well, I do not believe there are tax dollars to be had, but I do believe the quality of life that a woman can be lost. Wait a second, what motivates you? I don't believe that we can gain taxes. I would urge you to reject once and for all expanding the use and distribution of cannabis. Anything that produces, helps marijuana have its foothold here in Lassen County. I do believe that we're inviting criminal elements to Lassen County. And I believe that if Mexican cartels, organized crime comes here, and we facilitate them, oh, there. They won't get in line and ask to speak to this body. You won't get taped to them. They won't get you. And we'll bear to bear in mind.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? I believe then we will move on. We have a 10:00 AM time certain, is proclamations recognizing two of our employees on their retirement, and that's Lacy Barron and Lester Ruda. Do we have either in the room today? I think I'll save it for the reading, and for such time, and hopefully we would have a chance to recognize them in person. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Poked? Motion passes. So I'll move on to 10:05, time certain. Recognition awards for Stacy Harland, 10 years of service in behavioral health. Cheryl Strange, 10 years of service, public works. And Kevin Holt, 15 years, run department. Do we have any of them?
Yes.
Shall we start then with Stacy Harland? I think we'll skip the shaking of hands, so. But I do have, right up here for you. Thank you, sir. Tiffany, did you have something to say? No, you're too far away. This is the moment when we torture you. I mean, recognize you.
I'm Denise Armstrong, the Lassen County Behavioral Health Director. And I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Stacy on his 10 years' service for this county. Lassen County Behavioral Health is proud to have you as a dedicated and hardworking member working with us. You have consistently provided the department with leadership and hard work. Even though your office is tucked in the farthest corner of the building, you're always the first to take a crisis without complaints or suspect clients in need. With your quiet demeanor, you always make the biggest impact with the most challenging clients. Lassen County Behavioral Health has received many compliments and words of praise from the clients you serve. I'm really delighted to have you such as a valuable staff like you with us. Your dedication and commitment to the progressive discovery group is one contribution that I received the most positive feedback from the community. Even with the ongoing issues with COVID-19, the one complaint I repeat from Steve is, when will the progressive discovery group start again? On behalf of Lassen County Behavioral Health and the entire county, we thank you for your endless service.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you in form.
Cheryl? Cheryl, are you?
Cheryl's not here.
Oh, wait. And then Kevin?
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Behind you, Carol.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. This is great.
Larry, you've got to wait for Larry.
Kevin's our parts guy, son at our main shop here in Susanville. He did a great job of trying to get all that parts for our equipment on the road, which is very passing the time. I have all our equipment, which is hard to find the parts that keep them running. We do continue all your efforts, Kevin. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Larry. Thank you again, everybody.
I think that's fair, well, his hard work as well, as well, he does have a difficult job on the parts for our equipment. We have to save the faces. Sometimes he's successful, sometimes he's not, but he tries hard to integrate. So I appreciate it, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So we'll move back to unengaged, as endorsed by board members. Mr. Gallagher?
Oh, I forgot to adjourn the meeting. I have a couple of adjournments. One is Ray Solis worked for him at Spalding Community Services District last week, his wife died. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Marcia Solis, S-O-L-I-S. And the other longtime resident in Westwood, Carl Skate, you know, passed last week. He was in his late twenties, at some point. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of all those people.
Mr. Hamer?
Well, as we all know, a lot of this stuff, because working on this comes with kind of a screeching heart. But we're looking after the loss of Pat Williams, his buddy, favorite in the Sierra Alliance. And we're looking at reestablishing that effort, Shane and I, and Shane's been assisting me in that. A lot of this stuff that's at distance, Sierra Alliance, we broke the South County, can't do that Sierra Alliance. A little bit of that's going to fall on my shoulders, a little bit of that's going to fall on Shane's shoulders. And I appreciate, I just wanted to publicly thank Shane for that effort. Anything else?
Mr. Alvaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, I want to thank Barbara, thank you and your staff for doing that. Thank you for sharing that story. It's, like you said, it's one of those things that never gets out there. It's what we were talking about, supposedly, this is a true success story. Thank you for sharing that, and your staff. It's wonderful, and hey, thank you for letting your staff help out. Also, I'd like to encourage the people that did show up today, even though these three was postponed with commercial cannabis, is to stay active and stay involved, and I'm sure they'll probably come back again. Please stay up in, you've got to let us know what you're feeling and what it is, because it does make a huge difference. And thank you, folks, for today, for showing up and speaking. On a lighter note, I attended last night, on the 20th, at 8:20 in the evening, which in military time was 2020. We had a little light parade at the high school around the football track, and everybody kind of decorated their cars, and it's kind of the celebration for senior class. And it was very interesting, very nice. It was extremely well attended, from parents to the kids decorating their cars, to the fire departments, to CDF, Cal Fire, all the different people. It was just very interesting, and very, a good way to get together. Yet everybody stays such a distance because they all stayed in their own vehicles. Go around football fields, two laps, or stood there, probably 45 yards to make the two laps, by the way. It was very well attended, and I just thought it was a real success, and I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Go, go.
Mr. Hamer?
Well, I just want to thank staff for the good job they did with this COVID-19 deal. But I also want to reiterate what I said last week about the county doing its part to help our local businesses out. This thing's real. After I left here last week, I went to a restaurant, took lunch home to my crew, and I talked to the guy. He's doing only 20% of his business. He's not a government employee, he doesn't have a bargaining unit, he doesn't have a public union to ensure his wages during this time. We often complain about not having enough places in Susanville. We're probably going to lose one. Or more. Or more, when this thing's deal, when this thing's done. So my intention last week, and I understand I was mocked at a meeting afterwards about saying, telling people, break the law. It wasn't to break the law, it was to have compassion and have concern and discretion when making a decision when it comes to regulating the people. And that's all I'm asking. I'm asking everybody to be decent to people here. It's a bad situation, and it tends to consequences of this thing. We get to see all the mental health issues are just starting. I'm sure that the sheriff and his, and the police department I see there, I'm sure they're busier than ever on domestic violence calls, because people are tired of being cooped up with one another. And I'd say imperative that we do our best to make sure our locals are taken care of. And that's all I'm going to say.
Well, I wasn't planning on it, but let me amplify what Mr. Hemphill says here. It's certainly something that we spoke through today in public comment, and that is, for Americans, at some point, there are only so many regulations that you can place upon them before they will not follow them. And that the goal and the model that we should follow is actually coming to us from one of the most progressive countries in the world, one that normally we would consider as a role model, and we think they're too liberal. But we're talking, of course, about Sweden, where even though they haven't done a formal close down to the level that we have, the population has followed through in terms of understanding that no matter what the regulation is, that you have to act with reasonableness and caution in a situation like this. And so it'd be my hope that we don't have to regulate. It'd be my hope in a free country that we allow people to make their own decisions and understand for that. I also attended the city council of the city of Susanville on the 29th, this next Wednesday. It is still true, they plan on having a budget workshop. We can talk all we want, since we're talking about business, and it comes down to two things for a business, and that's revenues and expenses. If expenses are over revenues, then you aren't going to have service, is what's going to occur. And that's where we're coming to. And so no matter... And so no matter how we want to discuss this, if you can't come to me with a new revenue, then what you're going to have to come to me with is a cut in expenses, a cut in services, a cut in employees. So that's the stark reality. So I'm glad that there were folks here to talk about a problem that they perceived. And what I would suggest in the future is they find a way to pay for the services that they require. That's all I'm asking. It's not a profit motive for me, as I'm facing problems with my profit motive at this point as a small business. Furthermore, I also attended via Zoom meetings, well, they were actually phone meetings, they weren't Zoom. The PSA 2 RFP Committee, and what that was, is the funding for our senior center and the senior services in Modoc and Lassen County, amongst others, in Big Valley and Teach. And so after that, I attended, again telephonically, the PSA 2 Executive Committee, where we approved the RFPs. And so we now have funding for the Lassen Senior Center, Teach, and Big Valley, 50, 50-plus. So those are nice meetings to see, because it would appear that the federal government is aware of issues that include our seniors and are moving to make sure of the funding for that. All right, that concludes the unagendized board report. I think we can move to the consent calendar now. Does anybody have anything from the consent calendar that they would pull?
Anything beyond G2? I'm looking for a motion, thanks for the remainder. Motion by Alba, I took him and seconded it first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, G2.
Barbara, thank you. Can you explain a little bit about this program funding?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we put in our mental health services plan is we apply for an innovation grant. We have considerable challenges in our area between staffing of mental health therapists and two, dealing with our 5150 crisis incidents that occur regularly. So we've moved a lot toward telehealth. One of the things that we talked about doing is to have these grant care units. Now currently, we have grant care in our One Stop's, our family resource centers, and it's been a big success. We also have a system at Judy's House. And it's an opportunity for people to beam in and talk to somebody when they're feeling like they need to deal with some of their anxiety or issues that they're confronting. We also wanted to get these handheld devices that are called touchscreens, and they have sensors that go, that are attached to them. It's a very integrated system. So instead of having the big tabletop system, we can now have smaller units that we can send home with the client that we know, and there'd be some criteria and how we would assign those out to people. But they'd have this system so they could beam in, is what the term we use, to a therapist or a doctor. And they can have their vitals checked, and then the professional on the other end can see what those vitals are, their blood pressure, weight, height, kind of an assessment there. And they can ingest medication if needed, and that would be from the doctor who could do that. And so what we do is help alleviate some of the challenges that we're facing at the clinic by not having staff, because if enough staff to manage all those folks, and so that was one use that we would use it for. And now in this COVID environment, we're also seeing an urgency to do it as soon, as quickly as possible. The other thing with the 5150s, we have a lot of, it seems like after hours and on the weekends, we get people who are in crisis. We want to give, have these units deployed at Banner Emergency Room and also with our Crisis Intervention Team. That way, at like 2:00 in the morning or something, we don't have to have somebody drive into the hospital. They could immediately address that individual, do their assessment, and check some of the vitals, if you will, whatever they need to look at. And they could assess the person and get them out of the emergency room or to a placement or kind of put it in a pattern where it's not such a strain on the emergency room. We've also talked about, once we can get that all worked out and see how it's going, deploying them with some of our police staff, the sheriffs. And that way, when they're driving around, maybe they can talk to somebody, you know, help them work through whatever they're dealing with out in some of our county rural areas, instead of having to drive them all the way into the emergency room, perhaps some of the things, and the calming them down or whatever, that maybe can be addressed via the touchscreen device.
What kind of energy capacity would you have to have to run these?
It would be like the hotspots, the cell phones. We would obviously deploy these devices to individuals that do have internet, or we could make sure that they had a hotspot so they could access it. Again, we'd be deploying these to very specific individuals, not all our clients. That's why we're requesting only 50 of them. And so we'd assess them, assess their connection abilities.
What's the lifespan of these?
That I don't know. I can certainly, our director of medical health is here, Tiffany Armstrong. I can ask her if you've had that conversation with them. We are requesting to purchase the warranty on them, because one, they would be going to client homes that, you know, they may drop them or, you know, something might happen to those devices, so they would be protected. And I'm not sure, I'll ask Tiffany. Do you have any idea? There you go.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Armstrong, Lassen County Medical Health Director. And to answer your questions, since COVID-19 started, we have been serving almost approximately 800 clients via telephone. As a therapist, it is very crucial that I actually can see eye-to-eye contact with a lot of our clients, especially the ones that have severe mental health issues. And so with this product, I'm able to actually link in to see them. We are currently using this product. We have been using this product for over about four or five years now. We've had a dispatch of the One Stops, and our therapists are able to beam in with our most chronically mentally ill folks that need the most direct service. So this is an opportunity, because of COVID-19, that we saw in our community that we needed to jump on to get the services out there. One of the things we don't want to do is continue to have these people come into our emergency room so that we end up continuously having hospitals and 150/150s. We would like to be able to provide a more direct route, which is to do the eye-to-eye contact with these virtual iPads. And also to have the opportunity for law enforcement to be able to connect with some of our therapists also when these individuals are in crisis. That's our ultimate goal. That's one of the reasons why we wrote the plan about four or five years ago through the Mental Health Services Act, dollars, that we were able to use those fundings to help alleviate some of the stresses in this community because they're so far away. I mean, to drive up to Big Valley, to drive down the prolonged oil area can cause inconvenience for a lot of our staff. So this is an opportunity for us to be able to connect with our individuals instead of having to connect with them at the ER. It saves dollars for our community, and it also helps provide the best services for our folks.
Thank you.
Tiffany, by the way, I know this wasn't a spur of the moment thing. I know you've been working on this for years. And it's impressive, even in times, I can remember three or four years ago, when we were working on a slightly different grant. You were right, this was good work and well worth it. Thank you for it.
Thanks, yeah. It just is an opportune time. It's likely the best time, too. I mean, this is an opportunity for us to move this technology forward in our community.
Lassen County as well, sir. Thank you.
Looking for a second. Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Water Works, F1.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lassen County Water Works District is a small district in Lassen County that has a number of directors, five. The code was amended, I want to say in the 60s. That previously allowed for appointment for terms to this district. Now, as I read the code, the Water Works code, the Water Code, excuse me, it allows the appointment of directors of pleasure to this board for a period. Until we're able to have a pleasure board. And so the general manager of the Water Works District, Brian Thompson, came to the board office and asked the board supervisor to affirm the five appointments, the five board members, if you will, that represented in the package. And so that's the request of the general manager. That would include Danny White as the chairman, Rich Fitzher as the vice chairman, Jennifer Thompson as a member, Jim Chapman, different Jim Chapman.
Sir, I would love to put those people in there.
Better than us.
They would be liking to have Mr. Chapman's experience.
Yes, they would. If he was here, I'd say the same thing. And Debbie Vane as a member. Those are the five individuals that the general manager has affirmed as members of that record.
Question? Comment?
So, well, how would this be different than other, some of the other boards, just because it's a water board?
Because the code says so. It says, the California Water Code says so. And I think I included those sections in there.
You did.
Yes, 55301, I think there's a one in particular. Yeah, 55301, the last sentence, the first paragraph says, "Each member of an appointed board of directors that exists on the effective date of the amendment of this section of the 1967 rate of recessional legislature shall continue to serve pleasure of the board supervisor for the county, rather than the term for which he is appointed." Which we take to mean, for as long as you all want to serve, period. Thanks for your question.
You did.
Now, I don't know any of these people. I know Rich Fitzher's paying at a few times from around a bar, maybe somewhere around a bar in Big Valley. Glad to see he's still able to do this way. So I don't know any of these folks. That's my only hope.
And then no clouding surface?
Yes.
I know all of them, and they're all good, good people.
For the benefit of those who don't know, the Water Works District, I think, is the entity that is responsible for providing water delivery, storage, and delivery of water to the town of Beaver, by understanding grants. I think they may also be engaged in some sewage.
Water ads for the county.
Correct. Public comment? Close on motion for motion?
I would make that motion that the, in front of the appointments of the five board members for the Lassen County Water Works District.
Alba, who's named the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F2, Lassen County Planning Commission?
Yeah, not my ideal, but I can certainly address it. There's a vacancy on the planning. As we all know, that will be District 5, turned to expire March 31st, 2023. Two applicants, Taylor Hagatow and Jason.
Mr. Hagatow, would you like to approach the board or?
I don't, I don't think so.
Discussion, man? Mr. Alba?
I have the luxury and the privilege of sitting on the planning commission for Water Works. Like, 11, 12 years or something like that. And this is a very important position as we go forward, because they do a lot of the work that we don't have to do, so we don't have to do. And it's very important to help to sort of lead the direction of the county implement policies and directions. And I can't state the, I think it's one of the most important conditions we have in the county. And I'm very happy to see that we have more than one application to fill out.
Highly unusual.
Highly unusual. It is often very hard, difficult to get somebody to serve. Often it is a very reckless position, because you're quite often determining what somebody can and cannot do with their private property, and it's an exception. And it's, you don't get a whole lot for it, other than a good education. And so I want to commend those people for applying and preparing. Thank you. And in my opinion, I think there would be a wonderful.
Represented for District 5.
I'd like to thank that. It's also, Jason couldn't make it today. He called me when I was on my way in here. His wife's versus Sierra Depot and his babysitter, as we all know, nobody has kids in school now. And so he sent his regrets, but he's sure. Both these applicants are qualified. Stay with Jason. I will not make Jason today. I like Taylor. I think he did a good job. Both those have, Jason, with Jason, he's gone to all my town halls, and he goes to Sierra Alliance meetings. So he's got a one up on where we're headed, and that's going to be the economic growth into the south of Southern Lassen County. So I will not make Jason make.
Mr. Barrett, when we're doing this, is this a motion or?
It would be a motion, which would require a second.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second? Gallagher, second. Public comment? Here.
First of all, Mr. Barrett, I would like to reiterate to you that there is no 355 that you saw.
I get that. I understand, Karen. I understand.
I see that over and over again, though, because that is a priority concern. Get your Hagatow is educated. If you look at this application, he has experience and education in property assessment. And so I agree with, I buy both of those applications. I really think you should be considering your own nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Mr. Bridges?
I just have a question. Eric Bridges, thank you for listening. I didn't read either application, I'll be honest with you. I know the Hagatow family have been here for generations. And I know that they've got incredible investment, you know, investment interests. I don't know how long the other gentleman has been at Lassen County, but I think that's a pretty good important consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daryl? Oh, and do give your name, I apologize. Do give your name.
Radidaro. I also would just like to speak in, out of respect for Mr. Hagatow. I have not known him that long, but I have had extremely good encounter with him and I truly believe in his direction and his insight and his ability to do a good job in that position as Mr. Board Supervisor. I'm not quite sure how this is all working here, but does that motion mean that Jason is the only one being considered?
He is the one that we are going to vote on, and so if he, if that nomination failed, then Mr. Hagatow could then be considered as opposed. But yes, the motion is for Mr. Ginn to fill this seat with my.
So is there a way to get?
Convince three supervisors that Mr. Hagatow is the choice, and that's how it would be done, Mr. Daryl.
Thank you.
That is my goal.
I have a question. I have a question.
If I give up, it would be a very expensive.
I have a question for county council. Is there a way that we can assign an alternate to that board?
No, I don't think the code allows for an alternate. I think, I think you're in or not.
I know we've done that with assessors.
The assessment field order, that specifically allows for planning decisions on the board?
Well, in the county in Lassen, it's going to require, amongst others, Lassen, Lumen, Sierra, Community Action Agency is going to have an open seat or two. There's a couple of other seats that are available. So there are other ways to serve the county in Lassen. Do I have any other public comment? Call for question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move now to.
We'll move now to H one. We'll go ahead and take a recess for five minutes now. Thank you. So, I'm going to call the board, I'm going to call the Board of Supervisors back into session from recess. And Jim, we're going to start with the fair report, so.
Okay. You ready now?
Yep.
Okay.
Ready as we'll ever be. Let the record show the clerk is comfortable. So, with the fan, you're going to have to just enunciate clearly.
Unless you can figure out a way to shut off.
Without.
Shut off is pretty evil. So, you want to do that?
No, the clerk is comfortable, just be quiet.
If you know what's good for you.
Yeah, I know. I'm charging for my purpose on that.
He doesn't.
It's like the other one last week. Okay. Well, thank you for having me again. Go through a couple of things. I know you have my packet there, and we have a lot of scheduled changes in March and April. Some of the ones have been scheduled back into May, probably rule again, maybe someplace in first of June, then we can get those other parties to come back in. So, it was roughly about a twelve thousand dollar bill that we've lost in the last couple of months because of that Microsoft issue. And I just want to thank Bob for implementing, he put a language in our contract so that it says that basically, we're not responsible if we don't look through the fair or that stuff on it. So, I thought that was pretty good. We've been using that on our contract, we've had, so thank you, Bob. And also, we have a funding coming through. Bob finished that. I need to put that on the agenda for you guys to be able to approve. It's from California Department of Food and粮, it's a hundred and ninety thousand four hundred dollars that we'll be getting from the state. That's from that fourteen ninety nine bill, the three quarters of one percent of the taxes that the fair is dropping. What's kind of interesting on that, two of the biggest fairs put in fifty percent of that money, just to their tax money, so it was pretty, pretty nice. And that's the most I've ever seen given out since I've been here. When I first got here, it was five hundred and sixty five thousand. And anyways, there's a big chunk of change. Yes?
Is there limits on that money, on where it can be used, or how it can be used, or is that going to be distributed on that?
It goes in general fund. You can use it for bills, you can use it for that one, you can use for, for anything. We have another one that comes in that's forty six thousand dollars, and that's for, like, education, or go to W E Bay conferences and everything like that. So, but you can also use that for pretty much what you want. So, hopefully this will, it's in law, that fourteen ninety nine bill, so we should be getting that same amount pretty much. It came out today, I don't know if I said this, but it was eighteen point six million dollars. It was dispersed out.
How much was it, could we know?
Hundred and ninety thousand four hundred dollars. We haven't got it yet, but because we got the, I'm sorry, Bob. Bob had looked over the contract from California Department of Food and粮, it goes through there, and then just taking the F D and F D something up. The checks are already made out. We just have to terminate the paperwork, which we did today, so I emailed it off. So, I'm assuming the check will be here in the next three quarters. Even though we say they have it, but. We have, obviously, the calendar. We have a lot of changes in the calendar to give to the virus and that kind of stuff. People not want to use it so many. We have weigh-ins coming in on May thirtieth. All we're going to do is we're going to weigh, we're going, I'm sorry, we're not going to weigh, we're going to just tag them, and then we're going to weigh when they get here for fair, so that nobody has to get in and out of their cars, vehicles, and so. That's one of the things we're going to do for, weigh in or the tag ins on May thirtieth. So, you tag so many, so. And then, when they get here for fair, then we can go ahead and wait. Fair twenty twenty, it all depends on what happens with the governor. We kind of had a meeting and decided that by June first, we're going to try to have some kind of idea if we're going to be able to do it or not. So, it all, it just depends on the virus of the governor. Richard, you have something to say about that?
No.
Are we even going to have a fair?
Well, we're, I'm all right. We have everything. We have all our ground here in hand, our grandstand stuff. We're done. All the contracts have been in. So, it just depends on what the governor, right now, I know that they're going to wait till through May, but also hearing from another department that it's definitely sometime in the first part of June, middle of June, when they actually make a decision.
So, just for, for that, what I recommend, Jim, when we spoke, is that we delay making a decision on the fair until sometime around the first of June, but not sell tickets for activities until then, hold on, sell, because not like most of the activities sell out anyway. So, I think that's the good, which is just kind of wait until the first of June, or thereabouts.
Okay. Yeah, we have, actually, to tell you the truth, we have them on our website, and we haven't sold them yet, so that's, yeah, we'll, we'll get that down by eight.
All right. How about the, how about the elevator? How's that going?
Elevator, we, we have a little bit to do here. It should be coming in, it's going to be shipped here, because they asked if we could ship it here, and I said absolutely, you have to, you'll be able to get it off the truck and stuff. And as far as, they needed a D I R number that we gave them. So, I don't, I haven't looked at my emails, but I know they'll give us a couple of weeks left and know when it's going to come in. I think it was a six or seven week from the time he ordered it till to get here. And then, we talked about the parade and wage, and yesterday I had to pay the parade and wage, and they were, they were okay with that, so. Anyways, I think that's going through pretty smoothly. It'll help, you won't have to worry about too much, I don't think, but being new. And also, I hired a new girl in the office, her name's Evie, and she's done, done a good job for us. She's very energetic, and I'm glad to have her. And then, we got Taylor, Taylor Shannon that worked before, she records last year, she's been coming in, done a good job. I've got another girl coming on, that's going to be a more busy year, which is going to be a lot, because we're not selling tickets, so people aren't coming in. So, we're going to play that line here when I, when I hire her on, so. I know our maintenance guy is going to be, I'm surgery in June, so I'll expect him back for better. And so, we've got, is it okay? A lot of the heads, he has stepped down, we have, and he's going to help us during fair time with the maintenance and all that kind of stuff, so he's going to help out there. I know he talked with Gary Bridges, and I talked to, what was your name? David? Yeah, so, anyways, so we've got that kind of squared out. A lot of the numbers go wrong, plus he'll still be here, so, you know, during the whole day and stuff, so he'll still help us out. It's the same part as just the rest of the fair. Fair board, they usually help to do a lot of work, so it helps out to have, so. And I know about Eric, I think what we've talked to him, he was saying he didn't know what he was going to hold you up, which I understand, you know, the work comes through, I understand that, so. He said he'd come and point out if he could.
He's been, he's been mentioning it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the last one you saw, he was here, but he gets off, I guess, at five, it takes him a lot to get here, so he's usually thirty minutes or forty minutes, but we, we gave him another swing, you know, I usually talk to him after we're done, but he's the next to go first, so.
All right. Any other questions?
How about the races? What do you think of the races?
Races are the same problem, right? We can't have, can't have races. They've been out there keeping things up. I kind of had to jump on a little bit about the watering, but they, they.
And yet, the infield, I've seen that infield, it's growing pretty well, so I know they can be, pops and run can be a chore, but they're kicking butt out there in particular.
No, it looks nice. The inside looks nice.
Well, and those races, as far as I can tell, are a model for small fairs to actually have it. I know the dirty word here, profit, so.
I don't think he would be talking if he wasn't making money. I mean, he's making some money. I know it's about the same kind of.
Well, we're.
That's it?
We're.
We do, because.
He's not making money, he's not.
Yeah.
That's what's going down.
Yeah, we get, we give a little water bill, and he gives us about seven hundred and twenty five dollars a race, so. It's worth it. He does a great job. He really is a good guy. Takes no problems.
Takes a lot of heat off of you, and.
I'm sorry.
Takes a lot of heat off of you, and but tells a good story.
Yeah, he does. He does a great job.
Well, and speaking of that, the two volunteers that I think, there is a tractor, they were talking to me about access to it, and they do seem to be using it quite well to clear up some of that outfield there in that area. So, if you have a moment to talk to me about that, and as long as the liability issue is covered, you know, then it is something to consider, because if you look at.
They use our tractor, yes.
Yeah, if you look at the racetrack right now, and the area around it, it looks super nice. They've also been talking to me about K rails in order to push up the racetrack. I don't know if that's public works, or if we have some.
I can give them that, and choose.
If there's some K rail available, it could make for better progress. Any other questions, comments? We're good? If we do have a fair, and going forward, there was a report, there's an economist out of Sonoma State that's been talking about regional travel, and the fact that with the airlines, and the fact that people aren't necessarily going to want to rush into those tuna fish cans, or, you know, that regional travel is going to be something to look for. Some of this new funding absolutely should be used for regional marketing for our fair going forward. I know it's been an issue with funding, but if there is extra funding, I believe the Board of Supervisors will find a way to make it enough worthy in order to push in particular the attractions, the main attraction and the race, the racetrack in the future. Maybe not this year, it's going to be hard to do, but that has been a request. I know Mr. Hemphill has talked about it a great deal, but with new funding, I think it's worthy of considering.
Well, some of that money is going to be brought out there, and told us how much of it is going to be used for grants that we can get from California Department of Food and粮, so that'll come out later and show. Usually, they have monies available to the fairs to be able to, you know, do some upgrades, so.
All right. Well, I think, thank you, Mr. Walcott, for your effort.
Thank you very much. Everybody stay safe.
I do have a couple of questions.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to H two.
So, H two is a letter drafted to the Department, Department of Fish and Wildlife, the board's direction regarding, hopefully you've had a chance to review it, supervisor Hal Moss had quite a bit of input.
David writes a document.
That's Mr. Shaw thinking of that word. So, if there's any.
They admitted in that one meeting that the wolf was not a native species.
They're very careful about, about that.
Bureaucrats are often very careful in what they have to say.
I only have second to last paragraph, the enclosing paragraph, it says enclosing, the second sentence has been spent by, should be the, should be, like the state.
How much? How much has been?
Yeah. Disclose, how many taxpayer funds have been spent by the state for conservation?
You have to be sensitive about what I did in my.
He's getting back at you, Bob.
That's what I'm saying to me. By less than.
I thought it was interesting that we never got a response from our list list.
Right.
And it would seem like if they're having their public hearings, they would have to have some response to a letter that the Board of Supervisors from Lassiter County sends, and we haven't received any response whatsoever, which is crazy. And yet, they're still going to listen. It has endangered.
Well, it's not in their, it's not in their bad yard, and there's no votes up there and no money in the party, so we just, that's our place, just ignore it.
Yeah.
Keep it under the roof.
But I agree, we need to have a plan. There needs to be a plan. There's a plan for everything else that they do, but no plan for this.
Well, technically, they've adopted a wolf management plan in quotes, I believe, in two thousand and fourteen, or thereabouts.
But that was before they even had an animal in the state, and so, how do you have a plan when you don't know what you have?
Right, and that plan doesn't really fit with, like, what's going on.
That's why you don't make a plan until you have, until you know the study.
Well, the plan was made in anticipation of the wolf coming, maybe the wolves that traveled in and out reportedly. But the point is, I think, important that now that they have some experience, they should come up with a plan and deal with what we have now. They haven't done so, we have an indicator, they plan.
Hopefully, this letter will, I think it's a very well-written letter, I would approve it, send off.
A motion by Al Baugh, second by Hemphill. All in favor? Aye. Aye. opposed?
One thing I'd like to say about that, if we don't hear anything in the next three or four months, I think we should shoot out another one. So, we've got responses.
Or go visit.
Yeah, or go visit them, yeah.
Invite Mr. Stafford to come back up here and have them do as you want.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to do that.
Or ask them under conditions to come to our meeting.
Who will respond?
If past performance is indicative of future performance, they probably won't respond.
You can take some flash down and just hang out in their office, right? And they're the noisemaker to it again.
Flagger.
Flagger. Flattery. There you go. That'll get their attention. Maybe not the wolves. Richard, do you have anything for us under number four?
Nothing other than I just wanted to, and Barbara left, but I wish she would have been here, just wanted to reiterate how well her department is performing with this code. And they all have their normal functions that they're performing, like Barbara mentioned in addition to dealing with this kind of perceived corona thing. And Barbara gives a lot of credit to her staff, and they really deserve it, but I think, like a lot of our departments, the leadership is key, and Barbara is spectacular in her leadership, and I want to compliment her.
And David, I do have one thing. I just wanted to compliment Richard and.
I just wanted to compliment Richard and the rest of the staff on their broadcast that they've been doing. I don't know, I talked to them last night, it was very good. I thought the questions that are coming in were, were very good and you can tell that people still, I don't know, they're not, they're either not reading or they're not getting the information about what's going on and how we keep track of statistics and how the tests are coming back, but I thought your explanation was very good and I think if we just keep getting that message out. I, I really think Lassiter County is doing a great job. The people in Lassiter County are doing a great job in self-regulating and, and it's keeping us at zero and I think that's what we want to do.
Yeah, and, you know, my, my comment on that is, you know, our tact has been with regard to the crazy rumors that are out there and the person from Westwood that we're all familiar with over the weekend put out there that Lassiter County is hiding five positive cases. So, our, our message regarding that has been not to engage in the nonsense that's out there, but to just redirect people and, and encourage them to seek sources that they trust to get information. I think that's the, from a public information perspective, I think that's the best thing we can do is to not, you know, argue with the nonsense, but just to point out where there are good sources to get good information.
On that, Richard, I think we just need to write some letters to like Pullo C that, you know, we have an emergency. Open it up. Open it up. Newsom that. Open it up. Not use broad strokes to regulate that we are different. You know, it has a state that has very diverse environments, not just put us all in one, one bucket and.
And, you know, on that note, so the board has authorized me to offer letters like that.
Right.
That are consistent with RCRC's position. And we've done a few of those, and not specifically really of that issue, but related to the COVID issue in the encouraging those elected officials to look to the counties specifically when it comes to fiscal issues rather than sending it through the filter of the state of California that consumes a significant proportion of it before it gets to where it's supposed to go. And, and actually, some of the left-leaning representatives have been supportive of those issues and I just recently sent a thank you to them. Where we can agree with them on some issues, they can help support us. I don't know, I don't have impacted by the analysis, but we are going to continue. Where there are, are issues where I'm not authorized to offer those letters over to the board.
And, and I think the president actually has a good idea. He, he is letting the governors, you know, determine what needs to be opened and when. And I think maybe our governor ought to look at our counties and allow us to do what we think is appropriate for our county and plan.
Good note, end note. Jared? Sorry, I had to lift the password. And it's gone. Not bad, Richard. I had a little bit of worry about it before, as you.